Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to call this special meeting of the University Heights City Council order. The date is February 3rd, 2021. It's not February 3rd, 2021. What is it? February 12th, excuse me. 2022. Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Langau. Mrs. Barty.
Here.
Mrs. Wise.
Here.
Mr. Earl.
Here.
Mr. Rock.
Here.
Mr. Gould.
Is there a motion to excuse Mrs. Langau and Mr. Gould?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Barty, second by Mrs. Wise. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas will be called.
Mrs. Barty.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Earl.
Aye.
Mr. Earl.
Aye.
Will all those who are able, please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands by my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
First item on the agenda this evening is a motion for the appointment of Sandra Draper Behr in vacant city council seat. Is there a motion?
No. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Wise, second by Mrs. Barty. Is there any discussion?
Well, I'd like to say I am so happy you're welcome, Mrs. Behr, to the council. I'm getting her.
Does anybody have anything they'd like to add to this discussion?
Really looking forward to it as well.
Yeah. Mr. Rock. Mr. Wise.
I just wanted to say, I was very impressed when you came in and your resume, as soon as it came in through the email, I knew right away, like, this is the one. And I just read through it and I just knew right away. And very impressed when you came in. It was great meeting you. I look forward to meeting you.
We're excited for your challenge, for your representation. We're just, as you can tell, very excited to start working with you.
Thank you.
No pressure. Mr. Rock. And if I may just add, I did say a few words about last night, but just for the record here, this was, of course, wholly council's appointment for the charter, as it should be. The only reason the mayor would end up happy to make the appointment would be if council just didn't decide. And even though we had 26 excellent applicants, it does say a lot that obviously one rose to the top, and understandably so. And I am excited that he will join the city council as well. And I'd be as happy if it were my choice. So. Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Behr. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Barty.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Earl.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Very good, motion carries, and the vacant city council seat is filled by Sandra Draper Behr. This time, I'm delighted to welcome Judge J.J. Costello of the Cleveland Heights Municipal Court. I know there's a personal and professional connection here. We're delighted to have him here to administer the oath. So, the oath is up at the podium. If you'd like to come to the center, or wherever you feel most comfortable to administer the oath, that is our next item on the agenda. Take away Judge Costello.
Good evening. I, Speaker Nate.
I, Sandra Draper Behr.
To support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
To support the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of University Heights.
And the charter and the ordinances of the University Heights.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
As councilperson of the city of University Heights.
As councilperson of the city of University Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Amen.
The county's board is the name of both sides of the oath.
Doesn't really take this long to sound.
Very good. Mrs. Behr, would you join us up here?
Hi.
Well, with nothing further on the agenda, we would entertain a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Behr, would you like the honors? I'm sorry, before we do that, before we do that, I did not ask you to prepare, I don't know if they asked you to prepare your remarks, but is there anything you would like to say?
Well, I just want to thank all of you for having confidence in me. And I've really been a part of this council just in the week. You've all been so gracious. And I really do appreciate it. I want to thank my church. There's my chairperson, the deacon board there. Yeah, and I thank them, and it really just makes, does my heart good, that people I work with, my judge, and my family came today. I just thank you, and I love you all. Yeah, I make a motion to adjourn with me.
We have a motion by Mrs. Behr, and she has a second. Is there any discussion on this one? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Draper Behr.
Aye.
Mrs. Barty.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Earl.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
[applause]
All right, then, moving on, the agenda, the next item is reports and communications from the mayor and the taking of action. The State of the City was last week, and I want to address what I was going to call the elephant in the room, but it takes its way up to voting twice. Overall, I stand by what I said, the progress we've made together, the plans that are underway and going forward. But there were things that I said that were hurtful or offensive to at least some members of this council, and that was not intended. But my intent is of little or no consequence. Some background, Dennis Kennedy and I worked to propose what we thought was the best budget for 2020. We trimmed away hundreds of thousands of dollars from the original asks made by our departments. We left out projects that mattered to the city, such as the facilities review and request for proposals for new municipal facilities that our University Heights Municipal future will be presented on and recommended while we're here. We left out, again, a much-needed garbage truck, but decided to withhold that again, having the outcome of our solid waste study and any changes we might make to our rubbish and recycling program. What remained were the roads program, and the final remaining capital expenditures, tire turnout gear, and in-air pack salt. Equipment that expires this year must be replaced. Four new police cars, two new fire prevention vehicles, a dump truck, two new Kubotas that serve. Our finance director, understanding the parameters that council and I wanted in this budget, that we wanted a balanced budget, and not dip into reserves, and not dip into investments, suggested that we take out a short-term note to make up the difference. And when he said that, I dismissed it out of hand. But he asked me to hear him out. Right now, municipalities can borrow money at a rate of 1.6% that is less than what we're earning on the money we have in the bank right now. That is certainly less than what the city's investments are earning. The amount we borrow could be substantially paid off with funds that will become available over the next three years. Other neighboring municipalities have done this, or are doing this, anywhere from a million to 5.5 million. And we could do this for just under a million. We would be in a position to have these things now, rather than do without. And when it comes to vehicles, most of us in our everyday lives don't pay cash to purchase vehicles anyway. We finance them, and this is that. So, after rejecting it out of hand, I thought it over, and I warmed up to the idea. Why force ourselves to do without? Or dip into money making more in interest, having more return, than this financing that cost us? When administration proposed it to the finance committee, I forgot to take into account my own visceral reaction to borrowing money. And at our first finance meeting on the budget, I think it's fair to say that some reacted to my issue. And that was the day before I delivered the State of the City. So, I went home, and I remoted that section. My intention was to provide cover, to lead on the issue. I know our community is not used to the idea of borrowing money, especially when we have reserves and we have investments. It's an unusual ask. It's a tough ask. And I felt that I owed it to you to put my name on the line, to not leave it to this council to make the tough decision. So, when I said there were four choices before, and that three of them were to raise taxes, reduce the tax credit, or gut our safety services, I did not mean to imply that our members of council somehow were in favor of any of those things. Nevertheless, I said those words that left that impression among some, including, I understand, some of us who are up here on the dais. And while offense was not intended, that is immaterial, one offense is nevertheless received. So, for that, I am sorry. I apologize to each and every one of our council members, whether you were offended or not. Whether you were offended or not. I'm glad you will recognize that a number of members of council feel ill-treated, and were ill-treated in the past, not by you, but because of that treatment, there's a lot of sensitivity that remains. It's time for the eight of you, the seven council members and the mayor, to get back to working on the city's business, to continue the groundwork of compromise that showed such promise over the past two years. Due respect to what we, the residents, through the charter, have tasked each of you to do. Administration needs to be willing to compromise with budget authority of the council, and council needs to be willing to compromise also with the administration to ensure the city continues on the positive growth of the past two years. I will also say this, I never say something without telling somebody to their face. The mayor and I had a very good chat this afternoon, and he knew I have some complaints. He spared them personally. So, it is nothing against the mayor, against any council person, but please, we don't need to go back. We need to go forward. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Wise. And in response, I will, I have some things I'm going to say during the hours before, so I'm just going to wait until then rather than aggression. Mr. White, yes, my response to you, Mrs. Wise, yes, but you're just, given the opportunity to condemn the action that you described, I wanted to publicly do that tonight, because I think the spirit of what you've said is that you want to maintain and to grow a tradition of being able to communicate with one another. And certainly, what happened against you online wasn't fair, wasn't right, and given the opportunity, I actually wanted to respond to that. And thank you. And Councilman Gould, I did see your comments to that post on social media. I appreciate that you said there's. Is there anybody else who would care to address the city this evening? I see Mr. Rock in the back room. If you could come to vote, please.
Good evening. My name is Jim Outman. I live at 3781 Westwood Road. I had no intention of standing up here, but when I was listening to the previous citizen's comments, I really wasn't clear in my own mind what she was talking about exactly. But I have had a number of postings on the community Facebook page pertaining to the budget. So, I wanted to be clear that one of the comments that I made had to do with quoting the mayor's State of the City address, in which he said, and I don't have it actually with me outside of this, but in effect, he said, "Well, I'm proposing a million-dollar loan, and there's four choices. We can raise the income tax rate, we can cut the income tax credit, we can gut the public safety forces," basically, by which he meant not purchased vehicles, "or we can take out the loan." He described it as the world's easiest multiple-choice quiz. That struck me as sort of laying down a gauntlet. Here are your choices, you know, forget about all the other spending out there. Forget about the fact that one-third of the loan was intended to go to road maintenance or street maintenance. So, I think that I agree with Mr. Wise, that we have to be careful with our words. We have to be careful with the tone of our words, and understanding that sometimes our meaning or even our intention is not clearly conveyed between thought and word. So, I'm just sort of echoing what Mr. Wise said, but I'm also hoping that she wasn't implying various conversations or statements she didn't specify. I hope I'm not guilty of contributing to any ill feeling.
Thank you. Thank you, Drew. Is there anybody else who cared to address the city this evening? All right, then, moving on, the agenda, the next item is reports and communications from the mayor and the taking of action. The State of the City was last week, and I want to address what I was going to call the elephant in the room, but it takes its way up to voting twice. Overall, I stand by what I said, the progress we've made together, the plans that are underway and going forward. But there were things that I said that were hurtful or offensive to at least some members of this council, and that was not intended. But my intent is of little or no consequence. Some background, Dennis Kennedy and I worked to propose what we thought was the best budget for 2020. We trimmed away hundreds of thousands of dollars from the original asks made by our departments. We left out projects that mattered to the city, such as the facilities review and request for proposals for new municipal facilities that our University Heights Municipal future will be presented on and recommended while we're here. We left out, again, a much-needed garbage truck, but decided to withhold that again, having the outcome of our solid waste study and any changes we might make to our rubbish and recycling program. What remained were the roads program, and the final remaining capital expenditures, tire turnout gear, and in-air pack salt, equipment that expires this year and must be replaced. Four new police cars, two new fire prevention vehicles, a dump truck, two new Kubotas that serve. Our finance director, understanding the parameters that council and I wanted in this budget, that we wanted a balanced budget, and not dip into reserves, and not dip into investments, suggested that we take out a short-term note to make up the difference. And when he said that, I dismissed it out of hand. But he asked me to hear him out. Right now, municipalities can borrow money at a rate of 1.6% that is less than what we're earning on the money we have in the bank right now. And it is certainly less than what the city's investments are earning. The amount we borrow could be substantially paid off with funds that will become available over the next three years. Other neighboring municipalities have done this or are doing this, anywhere from a million to 5.5 million. And we could do this for just under a million. We would be in a position to have these things now, rather than do without. And when it comes to vehicles, most of us in our everyday lives don't pay cash to purchase vehicles anyway. We finance them, and this is that. So, after rejecting it out of hand, I thought it over, and I warmed up to the idea. Why force ourselves to do without? Or dip into money making more in interest, having more return, than this financing that cost us? When administration proposed it to the finance committee, I forgot to take into account my own visceral reaction to borrowing money. And at our first finance meeting on the budget, I think it's fair to say that some reacted to my issue. And that was the day before I delivered the State of the City. So, I went home, and I remoted that section. My intention was to provide cover, to lead on the issue. I know our community is not used to the idea of borrowing money, especially when we have reserves and we have investments. It's an unusual ask. It's a tough ask, and I felt that I owed it to you to put my name on the line, to not leave it to this council to make the tough decision. So, when I said there were four choices before, and that three of them were to raise taxes, reduce the tax credit, or gut our safety services, I did not mean to imply that our members of council somehow were in favor of any of those things. Nevertheless, I said those words that left that impression among some, including, I understand, some of us who are up here on the dais. And while offense was not intended, that is immaterial, one offense is nevertheless received. So, for that, I am sorry. I apologize to each and every one of our council members, whether you were offended or not.
the mayor's State of the City address, in which he said, and I don't have it actually with me outside of his face, but in effect, he said, "Well, I'm proposing a million-dollar loan, and there's four choices. We can raise the income tax rate, we can cut the income tax credit, we can gut the public safety forces," basically, by which he meant not purchased vehicles, "or we can take out the loan." He described it as the world's easiest multiple-choice quiz. That struck me as sort of laying down a gauntlet. Here are your choices, you know, forget about all the other spending out there. Forget about the fact that one-third of the loan was intended to go to road maintenance or street maintenance. So I think that I agree with Ms. Wise, that we have to be careful with our words, we have to be careful with the tone of our words, and understanding that sometimes our meaning or even our intention is not clearly conveyed between thought and word. So I'm just sort of echoing what Ms. Wise said, but I'm also hoping that she wasn't implying that it's conversations or statements she didn't specify. I hope I'm not guilty of contributing to any ill-feeling.
Thank you. Thank you, Drew. Is there anybody else who care to address the city this evening?
All right, then, moving on the agenda, the next item is reports and communications from the mayor and the taking of action. The State of the City was last week, and I want to address what I was going to call the elephant in the room, but it's its way up to voting twice. Overall, I stand by what I said, the progress we've made together, the plans that are underway and going forward. There were things that I said that were hurtful or offensive to at least some members of this council, and that was not intended. But my intent is of little or no consequence. Some background: Dennis Kennedy and I worked to propose what we thought was the best budget for 2020. We trimmed away hundreds of thousands of dollars from the original asks made by our departments. We left out projects that matter to this city, such as the facilities review and request for proposals for new municipal facilities that our University Heights Municipal future will be presented on and recommended while we're here. We left out, again, a much-needed garbage truck, but decided to withhold that again having the outcome of our solid waste study and any changes we might make to our rubbish and recycling program. What remained were the roads program and the final remaining capital expenditures, fire turnout gear, and in-air packs, all the equipment that expires this year must be replaced. Four new police cars, two new fire prevention vehicles, a dump truck, two new Kubotas that serve as... Our finance director, understanding the parameters that council and I wanted in this budget, that we wanted a balanced budget and not dip into reserves and not dip into investments, suggested that we take out a short-term note to make up the difference. And when he said that, I dismissed it out of hand. But he asked me to hear him out. Right now, municipalities can borrow money at a rate of 1.6%, that is, less than what we're earning on the money we have in the bank right now, and is certainly less than what the city's investments are earning. The amount we borrow could be substantially paid off with funds that will become available over the next three years. Other neighboring municipalities have done this or are doing this anywhere from a million to 5.5 million. And we could do this for just under a million. We would be in a position to have these things now rather than do without. And when it comes to vehicles, most of us in our everyday lives don't pay cash to purchase vehicles anyway. We finance them, and this is that. So after rejecting it out of hand, I thought it over, and I warmed up to the idea. Why force ourselves to do without, or dip into money making more in interest, having more return, than this financing that cost us? When administration proposed it to the Finance Committee, I forgot to take into account my own visceral reaction to borrowing money. And at our first finance meeting on the budget, I think it's fair to say that some reacted in my issue, and that was the day before I delivered the State of the City. So I went home and I removed that section. My intention was to provide cover, to lead on the issue. I know our community is not used to the idea of borrowing money, especially when we have reserves and we have investments. It's an unusual ask. It's a tough ask, and I felt that I owed it to you to put my name on the line, to not leave it to this council to make the tough decision. So when I said there were four choices before us, and that three of them were to raise taxes, reduce the tax credit, or gut our safety services, I did not mean to imply that our members of council somehow were in favor of any of those things. Nevertheless, I said those words that left that impression among some, including, I understand, some of us who are up here on the dais. And while offense was not intended, that is immaterial, one offense was nevertheless received. So for that, I am sorry. I apologize to each and every one of our council members, whether you were offended or not, and most of them. I apologize to our vice mayor, Mayor... No sooner are you the vice mayor than something I know you've been looking forward, having the opportunity of doing sometime, that this mayor is jamming you up, putting you out, replacing you in this difficult position. That is no way for us to start what I had fully expected and intend and still intend, to be a fruitful relationship working together as servants. So, Michelle, I am sorry. Historically, I have enjoyed a harmonious collaborative relationship with our council, and I hope this can be... Late this afternoon, Mr. Kennedy sent out a revised budget. The bridge loan is still there, but we have reduced it by more than a third, and I'm hopeful that Thursday's finance meeting, that we can discuss it. Since the State of the City and our special council meeting to appoint and install Sandra Barry as our newest member of council, I've done only a few things besides meeting on the budget. I attended the Northeastern Ohio Mayors and Managers Meeting and was briefed on coronavirus. I represented our city at the NURSD Council of Governors. I participated in the NOAC Finance Audit Committee meeting, of which I am now the committee's vice chair. I attended the county planning commission meeting, representing all of the heights. And among the business, we went over the ongoing effort for a complete count of our region and of our city in the upcoming census. Now, Mike Cook is going to go into this somewhat more tonight, somewhat more after tonight, but it is imperative that we get everyone counted who has lived here in the city as of April 1st. That includes all of our student neighbors who live off campus. We must make sure they self-report here. To be clear, even if a student in a rental on Warrensville Center Road is from, say, Rochester, New York, registers her car there, votes there, her parents still live there, the Census Bureau says she is to report herself as here in University Heights. And we need to make a strong effort that they all report, that everyone reports themselves for the census count, and in this case, for the students, before they leave town after minors. The problem is, if they don't respond to notices, census takers probably won't knock on their doors until they've already left for the summer, and we have to get them counted later. So that means all hands on deck, and every one of us up here has gone door-to-door for our campaigns or for other causes, and I respectfully suggest that this would be one of those times that we all put our skills doing that to us. Every person who doesn't get counted by at least one study costs us $19,500 in federal funding over the next 10 years that we could have had. I don't want to miss anyone here in University Heights. We don't want to wait another 10 years to try again. I wanted to wait until the tech advisory commission was appended and could meet before making a decision on IT. Unfortunately, I must report that the actions of our last IT contractor put us in a position where I had no choice but to terminate their services. I've brought in Bailey Communications, who had a quote in for a review already on an interim basis. Tech advisory should still meet, of course, and either recommend the continued use of Bailey or recommend the other vendor that I provided to Councilwoman Susan Partey, the third quote that I provided from the vendor I had to fire. Or make such other recommendations as deem appropriate. I know we'll be making appointments to the tech advisory commission this evening, and I do urge that the commission meet at the next available date. Finally, this is our last meeting with Patrick Rogan Myers as our Housing and Community Development Director. From the start as an intern from JCU under the previous administration through today, many of the best things we've done as a city over the last few years, and certainly the last two years, were done, at least in part, often in substantial part, by the efforts of Patrick Rogan Myers. While I long knew this day would come, it is nevertheless bittersweet to see you do this. I, of course, wish you, Patrick, great success in your new role as Economic Development Director for the City of Maple Hills. Thank you. This concludes my report.
Next item on the agenda are the announcement of appointments to council standing committees. Vice Mayor Wise, do you want to pick for them?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So in light of our new council member, Mrs. Sandra Barry, we had to make some adjustments with the council committees. There's going to be two changes, one to safety and one to economic development. So the new safety head will be Sandra Barry. The economic development head will now be John Rock. And just in terms of committee members and alternates, Mrs. Barry will now be a member of the Finance Committee and an alternate on the Building and Housing Committee.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mrs. Wise. Any discussion necessary at this juncture on this agenda item? Congratulations, Lee. Mrs. Barry, your appointment at the Safety Committee. And thank you for your service, Mr. Rock, on the Safety Committee. Congratulations on your appointment tonight. Next is the appointment of Susan Partey, Justice Moore to the CIC. As you most be aware, the community has a community improvement corporation called the University Heights City Beautiful Community Improvement Corporation. By the bylaws, the vice mayor is a member. Council has a couple of appointed members, and just by operation of changes that have happened with the council with the new year, we now have a new vice mayor. One of the other council appointees was the now vice mayor, and then the other one was Councilman Wes McPhee, who is no longer on the city council either. So there is, I believe, I understand, is council's intention to appoint to the two council seats on the CIC, council members Susan Partey and Justice Moore. So understanding that, so is there a motion to so?
So, may I?
Motion by Mrs. Wise, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Barry. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Whitefield?
Aye.
Mrs. Barry?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Motion carries. Susan Partey and Justice Moore so from the CIC. Next item is item two, appointment of members to the Technology Advisory Commission. While Susan Partey is not here this evening, I do have some names that have been put forward for appointment. They include, rather, to the Technology Advisory Commission, those include Andrew Grau, who is a resident here in the city. Some of you on council will recall Mr. Grau from the council appointment process that we just underwent. I also know Mr. Grau and know that he would have something of value to contribute to this commission. We have Stephen Delott as well. I think I may have seen Stephen this evening. Are you here? Oh, okay, sorry, I need to... Yeah, so Stephen Delott has also been put forward, and Mrs. Partey recognizes his point as well. I've also had a chance to work with Stephen in other capacities, so would be happy to see him there. Christine Hudak also has put herself forward for inclusion on tech advisory. I understand that in conjunction with her work at Kent State University, that she does serves in a similar capacity there among her many duties at Kent and could serve our city well in that same regard. And finally, I'm afraid my Chinese is not as good as I wish it were. John Quan has also been nominated for the Tech Advisory Committee. He's here this evening. Oh, yeah, there you are. I'm sorry, I didn't see your name.
Jiang Qian.
I was going to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Jiang Chen. Jiang Chen, is that right?
Yeah.
Oh, very good. Thank you. So those of our appointees who are here this evening, if you could just stand up in a floor, council, Mrs. Jiang, and...okay, good. All right, all right, great. Well, then, I believe the action that's to be taken here is that, I'm sorry, the mayor makes this appointment with that council, approves it. Does that sound right to me, Mr. Robert? I'm not sure. I think I can add the ordinance. Up to 15 members shall be appointed by the mayor with the approval of Civic Information Committee from those submitted by members of council. Do we still have Civic Information? And I would suggest that in the absence of the committee as a whole, which would be the council members up here, could simply make the... Do you think that'd be all right? Well, then, I'm happy as mayor to appoint Jiang Chen, Andrew Grau, Christine Hudak, and Stephen Delott to the Technology Advisory Commission. And they are so appointed, and then if a member of council would care to make a motion to appoint, to confirm any one or all four of those appointees, I entertain such motion as soon. For all four? So we have motion by Mr. Gould to approve all four appointments. Is there a second?
A second, welcome.
Very good. Second by Mrs. Blackfield. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blackfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Barry?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Very good. Well, congratulations to our appointees, and I hope we'll be calling a meeting soon for several reasons, including the reason I stated earlier this evening that the mayor's request. Thank you. Okay, then finally, other appointments, we have the appointment of Matthew Caleb to the Board of Zoning Appeals Commission. Mr. Caleb, you're here? Yes, there he is. Mr. Caleb, many of you on council will also be familiar with Mr. Caleb, because he too went through the recent process of consideration for our council seat. He has an excellent resume and wealth of experience. He attended our last BZA meeting as an observer and got taste of some of the work that we do there, and in spite of that, he is still here. And I'm delighted at Vice Mayor Wise's suggestion to appoint him to the seat that has been vacated by Harvey Shabbos. So Mr. Shabbos is a 30-year resident here at City University Heights. No sooner, because he spent a year or so on the board of zoning appeals that he saw that he'd leave town. So he's moving to Beechwood, and we all wish him very well. But I'm delighted to recommend the appointment of Matthew Caleb to the Board of Zoning Appeals under our updated ordinance on the BZA. Some may recall that it used to be that the mayor chaired the BZA and got a vote with that one, and then appeals from the BZA came from the council. And a couple of years ago, we made a decision to de-politicize the BZA, removing the mayor from the board of zoning appeals itself, now I just sit in the gallery with the rest of the peanuts. And we eliminated also the appeal to council to make it a less political process. You go to the BZA, you get your decision or you do not, and if you do not, the other choice then is to appeal to Portcom, which is a much more straightforward process and a better, good government measure takes the politics right now. All right, all right. So that all said, this is an unexpired term that would end this coming January of 2021. So I would ask for a motion to appoint Matthew Caleb to the Board of Zoning Appeals Commission for the unexpired term, which ends in January 2020. Is there such a motion?
Seven.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion by Mrs. Wise, a second by Mr. Rock. Is there any discussion? Mr. Caleb, is there anything you'd like to say?
No, thank you for the opportunity, of course.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Caleb? Okay, then, if there's no further, if there's no further discussion, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blackfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Barry?
Aye.
Mr. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Very good, very good. Mr. Caleb, we come up front, I will swear you in.
You will raise your right hand in the D and E. I, Matthew Caleb... I'm Matthew Caleb. Do solemnly affirm... Do solemnly affirm... To support the Constitution... Support the Constitution... And laws... And laws... Of the United States of America... The United States of America... The Constitution... The Constitution... And laws... And laws... Of the State of Ohio... Of the State of Ohio... And the Charter... And the Charter... And ordinances... And ordinances... Of the City of University Heights... Of the City of University Heights... To the best of my ability... To the best of my ability... As a member... As a member... Of the City of University Heights... Of the City of University Heights... Board of Zoning Appeals. So, I'll be off.
Congratulations, sir. Now, before we proceed to the next item on the agenda, make council aware of a grant that we received, notification of winning today. And per the terms of the grant, they want us to accept the grant before, the deadline is before the next council. So while this is a late add, I would move from the floor or ask someone to make the motion from the floor to add to the agenda either next or perhaps the last item on the agenda, so we don't have to remember everything. Motion to accept the 2020 Community Recycling Awareness Grant in the amount of $6,000 for the City of University Heights for the purpose of implementing certain activities that were described in the city's 2020 grant application. Is there a motion to add that item to the agenda as item, I'll just say item K and then bump. I don't know. Motion by Mr. Rock.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Blackfield. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blackfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Barry?
Aye.
Mr. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Very good. That item has been added as item K. Motion of executive session is now over.
Item L on the agenda.
And now we will proceed to item B on the agenda, which is Ordinance 2020-09, Resoning Certain Parcels Located on Warrensville South. Permanent parcel numbers 722-10-028 and 722-10-048, from Automobile Parking District U3 to Local Retail District 4, U7. This is on first reading, just by way of housekeeping. Items C, D, and E are all similar to item B, and Mrs. Drucker, our Economic Director, is going to speak on all four of these items, but we'll start with item B. So, Mrs. Drucker, you report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As the mayor stated, items B through E, I will be asking for a referral to planning as these are all on first reading. And in addition, on all of these items, all of the property owners of each of these items have been notified. They were all notified by through letter. That was made out on February 3rd. So begin with the first one. This is an ordinance to rezonate permanent parcel numbers 722-10-028 and 722-10-048, This is, um, an ordinance to rezonate, um, permanent parcel number 722-10-028, which is currently zoned automobile parking district, which is U3. What we're doing here is continuing, um, we've been cleaning up the zoning map and in the process eliminating the U3 where it was unnecessary, um, and then, and this is one of the cases. And then also in permanent parcel number 722-01-048, that is also zoned automobile parking, uh, U3. And here, we are requesting to rezone these two parcel numbers to local retail district U7, which would match the current use on that site. Uh, to each case of legislation, I did, um, add the letters that were sent to the, uh, to the property owner, and every property owner understood that this was proactive measure and that this new zoning designation would not affect the current uses that were on the site, um, today. So, this is just a housekeeping issue that will assist in helping, um, the city clarify our zoning map. And then I also attached the map, if you, um, look at the map for, that's attached to this piece of legislation, what you're looking at is the parcel is, uh, the two parcels are located north of Sillsby, on the west side of Warrensville Center Road, you see 722-10-028, and then just north of that, there's a box. The box does not have a parcel number in there. That is parcel number 722-01-048. So, this is a parking lot that runs behind the four, four parcel, permanent parcel numbers that face Warrensville Center Road. That's Flowerville, Juresees, and where a cut above is located. So, um, we are just looking for the two that are behind, the four that face Warrensville Center Road to make those rezonables as U7. So, that whole corner would be U7, which is local retail district. Any questions on that one?
Very good. Any questions for Mrs. Drucker? Mr. Gould?
When the current buildings that are on these parcels was coded as a U3?
Correct. Those, so U3 was, um, treated as a buffer zone, it's, it was for parking, but we really, our, our code covers for that if we were, if someone were to have retail and then we have some sort of screening. So, the U3, we wanted to, that's really not a use because it's not just a parking lot at a zone. That's a parking lot that's serving the primary use, which is the local retail district. So, that's why we wanted to just make it all U7.
So, I think a better acronym would be, hey, with these kind of, how was something able to be built on a U3 if it didn't meet that purpose?
Oh, I, there's, I, I don't, I can't explain why some of these lots were designated U3. What you'll also find, I'm gonna, actually, in the next one, there's going to be one parcel number that has two zonings on it, U3 and U7. So, I don't know, I can't explain what may or may not have happened through the years and if something was not clarified on the map, but when, when we're looking at the zoning map, when we identify these irregularities, if you will, we just, this is a process to clean them up. So, I don't know why that one, one parcel would have two zonings on it, which you can't have. Um, so, what we looked at was this U3 was the easiest, kind of the low-hanging fruit on the zoning map right now, to clean that up. Um, so, once we're done with, there, there were, after today, if all four of these are referred to planning and then ultimately, um, the U3s are rezoned to U7s, on our zoning map, we will only have two, um, parcels that will be zoned at U3. One is the parking lot, that is actually a parking lot at John Carroll University for the students, and then the other one, um, will be the parking that is, that, the U3, that's the parking right behind the McDonald's, and we were doing some research on that site, um, because of when that, when McDonald's was built, we're, we're discovering it never was consolidated, so that, that's something I'll be taking care of separately. Um, so, in fact, I forwarded Luke, the mayor, uh, Luke and the mayor, um, that information today based on some old planning events. So, unfortunately, I can't answer why these were zoned the way they were. I just am here to clean them up today and make sure we establish a record for how these, uh, parcels are zoned and why we're zoning them that way.
Yeah, just to provide a little additional context on the question that you're asking is really the question, um, that we've been asking internally that's generated this review of the zoning map and then caused our parcels such as the ones in front of me today to, um, be reviewed and, and put before council with, with, um, what we hope will be a referral to the planning commission, um, so that we have consistency, um, between parcels, um, that, um, will allow us to, to, I think, do some more effective planning going forward. We literally have, um, buildings, commercial buildings located within the city that are split between zoning districts, and if, um, new businesses move in, it, it creates a whole host of potential problems, if there's a reason to deny, um, building permits, or if there's some other kind of problem. So, we are seeking to, um, create certainty for the city in terms of legal analysis and the plan that comes before us as we go forward, and that's really, uh, the main impetus for, um, the review that, that, uh, Mrs. Drucker and Patrick Rogenmeyer's have conducted relative to our zoning.
I just want to make sure that there is some type of process that's in place so that in future, when we, we are doing this re-zoning, that the building process should involve making sure that the lot is appropriate for what's being asked to be built. So, at some point, someone came along and said, "I want to put this business on this U3 zone." And then someone issued, presumably it is called issued permits, someone issued permits to allow a structure to be built, and those permits were issued without a process that checked to ensure that the structure on which they, you know, that the land that, on which the structure was built were appropriate for that purpose. So, I just want to make sure that that process is being implemented now so that we do that.
Okay, okay. And, and we have a, a project that's going on right now, um, it's the John Carroll Tennis Court Project, uh, that was recently approved, where, um, the parcels on which the expansion of the tennis court facility, um, are going, is going to extend, those parcels were rezoned, um, so that all of the contiguous parcels on which the tennis courts would be situated have the same zone. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, we, we can all, we won't be guessing as to what the rationale was behind doing what was done historically. Uh, we don't have historic record as to why, what motivated doing building on, on, across different zoning and allowing it to occur. Uh, but, but we are, you know, hopeful of doing a comprehensive zoning update and, and the, and cleaning up these sort of things now before we engage, uh, someone for doing that. It, you know, these are things that we can clean up and give them a, a better starting point. So, um, Mrs. Drucker has endeavored to, to, uh, locate some of these and shepherd through getting these, so I can be done for this.
Just to, to add to that, this is a perfect example of why the last two years we've really wanted to put, um, in place, you know, a mechanism where we can, where we can actually, you know, put RFPs up and actually get, um, company in, so we do this, because we keep coming up, you know, I think this is, I don't know, the ten. It's been in two.
This is not, these four do not end.
Right, I mean, they're, they're coming back.
Until we have that, up the zoning code, every time, as, as you were saying, when a business moves in, when we have us one parcel or, or a, um, several buildings, but the building split in half with two different zonings, that has two different sets of requirements. So, it can affect parking requirements, uses, what have you, and so, it, it does, it's a mess. So, as these issues were coming up, and then we started looking at the map, that's why we just wanted to start, we wanted to attack the things that we could take care of that wouldn't negatively affect or impact if we did get a comprehensive zoning code, it wouldn't, it wouldn't impact that work. This would be just, they would include this part. This isn't something that they, somebody, uh, somebody would look at and say, "Ah, you know what? That was done wrong." This is cleaning that up. It's one, it's eliminating one problem that we have.
The changes, I think, are, are meant to, um, you know, first of all, not adversely impact current owners ever. Um, and secondly, to provide a more, um, development-friendly environment for anyone who might be looking at a particular piece of property or a particular use. And, and I think an effort's been made here with respect to the parcels that are for us as well as other parcels that may be coming, to let those business owners know that none of what we're doing here is intended to interfere with their operating, that what we're doing is cleaning up, um, cleaning up our side of things, uh, so that in the future, there is less confusion, you know, should they ever want to redevelop, should somebody else come into their place, and so on.
All right, so, item B has had its first reading. Uh, I suppose we should read C, D, and E.
Before we do that, I think we'll, um, just, just as a, uh, reminder to council members and also for benefit of, um, general public, our zoning process requires referral to planning commission, uh, for planning commission to conduct a public hearing. The property owners will also get notice of that public hearing. Uh, planning commission makes a recommendation with respect to the ordinance, that recommendation comes back to council, it is not binding on council, but whether you implement the recommendation or not, um, may, may, a number of votes that are required to buck the planning commission if you will.
Yes.
Is different from the number required to accept the recommendation. But it's on, it will ultimately come back to you for final approval. So, at this point, we would be asking council to refer, uh, the ordinance to the planning commission by motion.
All right, is there a motion then with respect to item B, or item B, to, uh, refer of the ordinance 2020-09 to the planning commission?
Someone?
Okay, motion by Mrs. Blankfeld, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Wise. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call a roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Aye.
Mrs. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
All right, very good. Item B, ordinance 2020-09 is hereby referred to the planning commission. So, now, move to item C, ordinance 2020-10 rezoning a certain parcel located on John Carroll Boulevard as follows. Permanent parcel number 721-06-008. From U7 and U3 to local retail district or U7. This is on first reading. Mrs. Drucker, anything you wanted to add with respect to this particular right?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, this is a John Carroll property that was consolidated from two parcels to one. It's also that the whole lot was split, so half was, is University Heights, the other half is Shaker Heights. So, this is one particular parcel that has two zonings currently attached to it, U7 and U3. So, if you look on the map, um, that I attached to that, you'll see the, uh, boundary line going right through the middle building. This is where, uh, where the parcel number 721-06-08, you'll, that corner, that's where Pizzazz is, just so you have a frame of reference. So, that parking lot, um, is also, um, to serve the primary use of that retail district. So, we wanted to rezone that to just U7 and eliminate the, the U3.
I've always wondered what part of that, the University Heights and what part of Shaker?
Well, in, in that building alone, it's, so, the easiest way is from Pizzazz down to what was formerly the Sweet Melissa's, but just so everyone knows, the Sweet Melissa's, the city only has jurisdiction over the sign and everything else goes to Shaker Heights. So, it's something we've been trying to work with Shaker Heights and maybe just trying to.
Our opticians, the front of their building is University Heights, the rear of their building is Shaker.
Right, and then on the second floor, half the businesses are in the, you know, so it's really, it's unique, it's a unique situation. So, this is just one step in addressing issues over there, because we have been in contact with, um, Shaker Heights about possibly splitting, so for, so when the new business owner that's taking over the Sweet Melissa space, they had to go to both cities for their planning, because they had to come to us for, for the signage, and then they're going to Shaker Heights for the rest of the, the interior buildout of, and, and then if they wanted to use the patio. So, it's really, that is not business friendly. So, um, so we'll be looking at that building.
There are people on that second floor, and some of them would say they're in Shaker Heights.
Correct.
Some of them say they're in University Heights.
Correct, yes. That's correct.
Funny thing was Sweet Melissa's always advertised as their University Heights location, and again, really much you're in the building seated, you're no longer.
And that's the side that, uh, most of ours, you know, you think it's Shaker. And then that lawyer in there, this is another story.
I'm positive now, I had a conversation with the homeowners of the Picknick Hill, they tried to get into University Heights, and everyone with business locations that tried to get into was already spoken for.
Yeah, yeah, it's one, and actually, the, um, the Big B's that just opened, he, the, that owner actually has a business in University Heights. So, we, I was showing him some spaces, this is over sometime last year. So, he called me up, he's excited, he goes, "I found a space in University Heights." I'm like, "Great, where?" And he told me, I'm like, "That's not University Heights." So, um, but, um, but he's still interested in bringing a Big B into University Heights, actually.
And I can tell you, Mike Cook has been single-handedly keeping him in business.
True.
All right, all right. So, is there a motion? Did you have, is that what?
No, that was all on this, and this is all personal.
Okay, is there a motion then to refer agenda item C to the planning commission?
Someone?
Okay, very good. Motion by Mrs. Blankfeld, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Berry. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call a roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Aye.
Mrs. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Very good. Uh, item C is, uh, is now referred to the planning commission. That takes us to item D, ordinance 2020-11 rezoning certain parcels located on Warrensville Center Road. Permanent parcel number 721-02-027 and 721-02-028 from automobile parking district U3 to local retail district or U7. This is on first reading. Mrs. Drucker?
Uh, thank you, mayor. This is, um, has to do with the two parcels that are at the, um, that are behind the Sillsby Center, and that is, um, runs from Bialy's down to Rascal House. So, we have two parcel num, these two permanent parcel numbers are currently zoned, uh, U3. We want to, I'm asking that for those to be rezoned to U7. If you look on the map, um, right behind, it, it's, um, north of Sillsby Road, on the east side of Warrensville Center Road, um, you, again, this is one of those where you'll only see a little box. So, uh, you have 721-02-028, and, and then 721-02-027 is the box that does not have any permanent parcel number listed in it, um, but that would then be making those U7. Um, and just to take this a step further, this is, the, the next step with all of this is, once we have things properly zoned, then we're going to have to be addressing with, when you have one property owner and all of these types, these lots, consolidating lots under a common ownership. But again, that's something we'll be looking at in the future. We want to first get everything zoned properly and then take that next step ultimately sometime in the future. So, um, this is the parking lot that serves the retail located, um, as I said, between Bialy's and Rascal House. So, we're looking to rezone that to both of those parcels to U7. And that would match the current, uh, use of, of the site.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Drucker. Any questions for Mrs. Drucker? Is there a motion to refer, uh, agenda item D to the planning?
Someone?
Very good. Motion by Mrs. Blankfeld, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Wise. Any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we call a roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Aye.
Mrs. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries, and this matter is referred to the planning commission, which leaves one more. Item E, ordinance 2020-12 rezoning a certain parcel located on Warrensville Center Road as follows. Permanent parcel number 722-10-023 from U7 and U3 to local retail district or U7. This is on first reading. Mrs. Drucker?
Uh, yes, this is the building on Warrensville, uh, where Dr. Carper and Gilmore Comprehensive Dental Healthcare is, uh, right across the street from, um, the Annex. Um, if you look on the map, this is the L shape, this is the one that is south of Bushnell, 722-10-023. You see, it's an L-shaped lot. So, if, if you look earlier, the first item we did was, um, the parking behind the, from Flowerville to, uh, a cut above. This was one that was split, you know, or it was consolidated, but yet the, the U3 zoning remained on it instead of making it all U7. So, we want to, um, rezone that entire parcel to just U7.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Drucker? If not, is there a motion to refer agenda item E to the planning commission?
Someone?
Very good. Very good. Motion by Mrs. Blankfeld. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Berry. Any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld, aye. Mrs. Berry, aye. Mrs. Wise, aye. Mr. Rock? Mr. Gill?
Aye. Very good. Agenda item E is now referred to the planning commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Drucker. Next is item F, ordinance 2020-13, authorizing all actions necessary to accept the Northeastern Ohio Public Energy Council, NOPEC, 2020 Energize Community Grant. This is on first reading. Mr. Gergen Myers, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So this is the formal action that we undertook similar to last year. NOPEC provides a, an amount of funding annually based on its billing, the amount of customers here in the city, for the city to be able to provide back to residents cost savings through some sort of energy improvement project. So as you may recall, last year, we worked with the police department to be able to get new LED school zone signs and equipment, as well as traffic lights and pedestrian crosswalk signals, LED bulbs and things of that nature that will ultimately deliver cost savings to the residents through those fixtures. That was through this same grant program. So this is the first step in that process that we'll undertake every year. So this is the formal authorization for the mayor to enter into agreement to accept those funds and agree to abide by the terms and conditions of the grant program. When the city has a program, excuse me, a project that is ready to be part of an application, we'll come back to the city council to you and seek your approval to actually submit that application. So like I said, this is just kind of the formal accepting of the grant funds. Unfortunately, I made a request of NOPEC to see how much do it be receiving this year as part of the grant agreement. They've not gotten back to me yet. Based on last year's figures, we're looking at about $42,000. So in that, we can escrow that over to another year if we're looking to do some somewhat larger project. And so I believe we escrowed maybe about $30,000 last year. So there's a nice chunk of funds that I'm sure we'll continue to, while I'm gone, continue to look at how to deliver energy savings to the residents.
Thank you, Mr. Gergen Myers. Any questions for Patrick?
What I would like to say, I'm certainly going to miss Mr. Gergen Myers for all sorts of reasons, but his hard work in getting us grants, sometimes quite substantial for things like this, that will be greatly missed.
Congratulations on that.
Yeah.
Thank you. And when you say after I'm gone, it does not just sound so obvious.
He also, he also kept saying, "We'll come back." And I'm like.
All right. I'm a guest, I'm a guest. Well, you know, I participated in the first time with consortium, I know I'm going to see. All right, all right. Any other questions as to the ordinance itself? Well, this is on first reading, there's no reason. So if there's nothing further, the first reading is had and we will bring it probably at the next council meeting in March. Just without, oh, you didn't have to leave already. Very good. Item G is ordinance 2020-14, enacting codified ordinance section 1620.07, titled Prohibition on Tampering with Fire Protection Systems and declaring an emergency. And this is on first reading. Chief Perko, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This ordinance is in conjunction with our ongoing safety analysis in the Fire Prevention Bureau and our collaboration with the law director to strengthen our ordinances and implement best practices in the community. It addresses a lot of the systems that have been currently maintained throughout the years and then some of those systems that our prevention officers are getting out into the community more, making sure our systems are up and running. Sometimes they go off and there are false alarms. These situations, the tenant may not always know what to do and may reset the alarm or silence it. There's other instances where the alarm goes into a trouble mode and where it would not alert us. So this ordinance covers not only tampering, but silencing the alarm or resetting the alarm. Example of what can happen from this, we've had instances where like a multifamily apartment with a high risk has had an alarm go into trouble, where the fire department wasn't made aware, or it didn't make its way to a maintenance custodian and then weeks or months go by where there's no fire protection system in place to automatically alert us to respond. So this will aid us not only with tampering, but to make sure that we're doing best practices and make sure the community is safe. In the ordinance, you'll recognize that it calls out for the commercial, industry, retail, and multi-residential occupancies, and then it also spells out the different zoning districts. Item subsection C spells out what fire protection systems is, and that is from chapter 1620 in the current ordinance, which is partnered with some of the previous ordinances that the law directors assisted us with last year.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Perko. Mr. Perko, I think you wanted to add to this.
Just very briefly to piggyback on what the chief had to say, we drafted language in this ordinance to make sure that it's consistent with our defined terms throughout this chapter, so that it's consistent. Other than that, I think that it speaks for itself.
Was our intention, because, Mr. Perko, was our intention to vote on this evening and have it go into effect immediately? Or? Well, it says first reading, I just want to clarify.
So we've, we've had our first reading. I believe it's the chief's preference, it was to put into place immediately.
Okay.
I don't see the downside to that other than reading. Certainly allowed the chief to inspect for an oversight of this ordinance.
Very good. Mr. Perko?
Thank you. We just spoke about moving certain businesses and buildings from U3 designation parking lot to the U7 designation, which is covered by this ordinance. How then does that affect our communication to those businesses that moving designation, your zoning designation from one to the other has no effect on their business if now they will be subject to additional fire projections?
Well, all of their buildings are located in one way or another in something other than U3. So we have, we have buildings that sit in two separate zoning districts that, where one of which is a U3. But they all sit in a park or a district other than U3. U3 is designed and meant to be a parking district only, so it's essentially meant to be just a parking lot. So I think the city would take the position that they would be subject to a district that they're in that constitutes a building being located on the park. But in any event, this is a new regulation, so you know, there are, there are commercial buildings throughout the city that don't currently have to need or really be subject to this requirement, but it doesn't currently exist.
I mean, if, just looking back at the item E, which is the dentistry, and that particular dental practice, it presently straddles outside of U3 and they're subject to rules that go to U7. This unifies that U7 really does truly apply to the entire building. I don't think anybody, I don't think anybody is taking the view in any of the parcels where there is split zoning that if you're standing on this side of the building, one set of ones is fine, if you're standing on the other side of the building, or even the other side of the same office, that they don't. But it's a matter of avoiding that kind of thing. And I think you'd find that in every other respect, they're followed the zoning, that's the non-parking lot portion of the zoning, or other aspects of their business use. Do you have, probably there's any? Yes.
How would you, how about this?
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to get it out. There may be, Chief, how would you kind of let people know, the fire, the fire systems, perhaps we could sticker them in ordinance or something?
Most of the fire prevention bureaus in the area do sticker them, and they reference the ordinance on the sticker that goes on the fire alarm panel itself.
We clear it's violation of tampering.
Right. To be clear for the record, so this specific ordinance only addresses tampering with a system that is currently in place or would be required to be in place for some other reason, whether it be a new build out or a different use. So to your point, if there's no system in place there, then it's not going to require them to put one in right now because of this specific ordinance. It would just reference that they could tamper with the one that's currently in place. Then we would sticker that. Some of the previous ordinance changes we have done, we have rolled out letters to the business owners to let them know what was going on. We can begin to do the same thing for this.
Very good. Thank you, Chief.
How that you brought up some businesses don't get candles, do you know what percentage of our commercial has or does not have?
I could give you an accurate number, maybe 50%.
Really?
Of the tenants, not the builders.
But all the buildings, like all the, there's a stretch of stores that building would have a candle, but maybe not an individual?
It's mixed throughout the city.
Really?
And then as this references fire protection system, it's not just the fire alarm panel. That could be a cooking suppression system, spring, or any type of thing. So it's, I'm not going to give you an accurate number.
Does anybody else have anything for Chief Perko? A, or the question or comment on those ordinance? Is there a motion? So, yes, it would be a motion to adopt an emergency. Okay, Berry. So a motion to adopt an emergency by Mr. Rock. And do we have a second? Is that this is by the builder, this is Berry? I thought I heard you saying that.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Berry. Here we go. Okay. Is there any discussion on this motion? Well, for the benefit, yes. Well, for the benefit of our new council members, there will be two votes. First, a vote to suspend the rules to allow for the consideration on emergency, so that this can be immediately implemented and then into law upon my signature. And then a vote on the motion, so, a vote which will require not a vote of four, but a vote of five. Correct. Great. All right. Well, then if there's hope for the discussion, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll first on the suspension of the rules?
Mrs. Blankfeld, aye. Mrs. Berry, aye. Mrs. Wise, aye. Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gill?
Aye.
And then the roll call on the main motion.
Mrs. Blankfeld, aye. Mrs. Berry, aye. Mrs. Wise, aye. Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gill?
Aye. Very good. Ordinance 2020-13 passes and will become law upon presentation and signature by the mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Perko, for your work on this. Thank you, Mr. Perko. All right. Next up is item H, motion approving finance director Dennis Kennedy and deputy finance director Rita Drew as delegate and alternate delegate to the regional income tax authority, regional council governments. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just an annual update to the council of governments established by Rita, and this will give me the ability to participate in decisions and votes that relate to the Rita organization itself on behalf of the electors.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions on this matter? There are none. Is there a motion to approve?
Someone.
Motion by Mrs. Wise to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you, Mrs. Berry. Second by Mrs. Berry. All right. Any discussion? Seeing now, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld, aye. Mrs. Berry, aye. Mrs. Wise, aye. Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gill?
Aye.
Very good. Motion approved. Next is item I, authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for the 2020 grass nuisance and maintenance program. Now, Mr. Gergen Myers, you may take.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is to solicit bids for the contractor who would go out and cut grass for residents who do not comply with the yellow tag type of, unless that's when the grass grows too tall or it weeds and croaks. So this is, we're getting, we're jumping on this a little bit sooner than we did last year and trying to get some more about game of competitive bids and, you know, to be needed around the season. So while I'm up here tonight processing this, I need to have the housing department moving forward at least for the time being, the service director will be handling this, you know, both just because it seems to be the most logical place, but also in conformance with chapter 1084 of point super form, which has the service director taking care of this. So the housing department will continue to tag properties as has in the past and work with the service director where to get those addresses to the grass contractor in the future, should we need.
We had an issue last year, right, with our contractors? Any of that can resolve?
So there were kind of several moving parts to that issue. The first was with the timing of the creation of the housing department. We didn't go out to bid until later, just at the start of the season. So that posed a timing challenge that we ended up resolving just by getting the grass contractor in place. Part of what we were also implementing was a newer system, something that required the contractor to provide us pictures electronically as part of the invoicing. So I believe that we smoothed out a lot of the issues that we were struggling with last year.
So it wasn't actually the contractor, it was just the process? So Kingston, that he wasn't, or that the company wasn't?
So there was a stopgap contractor while we were bidding out, and that was where we were having issues with the contractor, but it was intended as a stopgap. Once we got the actual contract in place, once you approved the bid, that's when everything kind of got off course and was able to work out.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions about this agenda? Is there a motion to authorize the mayor to advertise for bids? Very good. Motion by Mr. Gill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Wise. I can't wait to do this. For reasons, I'm not going to get into this. I have plenty of others to answer for. All right, all right. Is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing now, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld, aye. Mrs. Berry, aye. Mrs. Wise, aye. Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gill?
Aye. Very good. Passes. Thank you, Mr. Gergen Myers, and thank you also to Mr. Gergen. All right. Next up is resolution 2020-15, authorizing the sale of the 1990 new Pierce ladder truck to the Putten Bay Ohio Fire Department in the amount of $16,500 on emergency. Mr. Perko, Chief Perko, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, as you know, we've been working on the build out of the new ladder truck, which I'll report on during the director's report, as we're very close to taking delivery of that. Throughout the year, last year, I was looking at avenues to see how we can best make the use of decommissioning our old ladder truck. Sometimes with the strict standards from the NFPA and the insurance services office, it's difficult to try to sell these, even on gov deals and the like. This truck has been out of service since September 14th of last year. It did not pass its aerial ladder test that we conduct on it annually to meet the standards. It bounced around from vendor to vendor to try to find what would be the most efficient use of our money to repair it. There were a variety of different issues. Most of the quotes ranged from $10,000 to $20,000, and we didn't want And we didn't want to put undue money into this truck as we were getting so close to taking delivery of a new one. When we finally found a repair shop that we felt comfortable in exploring what some of the repairs we could do just to make it safe to operate so that we would have a vehicle in the city to serve the community and to report to ISO with, the vendor Pierce, I'm sorry, the manufacturer Pierce would not certify that vendor to do the work. So we reached out to get another vendor out in Fairport Harbor where the truck was at most recently. They were certified by the vendor. And the quote that that repair shop had given us was $10,000. We did not want to spend that money, especially as September quickly became October and then December. We were getting nearer and nearer to delivery. So we held off on the repairs. Meanwhile, I had interaction with the Putten Bay Fire Chief and he had reached out and discussed some pleasure from the service they were having on their trucks because they'd use the same shop. And they determined they have a need for this type of ladder truck. They have not had a ladder truck on the island of Putten Bay. They are 100% volunteer fire department. They're struggling for funding. They have raised some money to purchase a ladder truck, nearly enough to purchase a new one yet. So this was very good timing for them as well as for us. The ferries are not currently running from the island to the mainland, so they actually put a committee together, flew over to the mainland. I met them on February 14th out of Fairport Harbor, gave them a full demonstration of the ladder truck that we currently own, showed them all the deficiencies, gave them all the back service records dating back to the 90s as far as I could find, to give them the history of the vehicle. And they were very interested in it. So as indicated in my memo to you, they had a meeting with the town trustees this evening, actually this afternoon. He did let me know that they did pass this, so I am bringing it to you. We did deem that this does not have any municipal purpose for us in the city here. Furthermore, we don't have any space to store indoors to keep it as like a reserve apparatus if we did want to put the money into it. After confirming with the law director, we did make sure that we could sell this outright to the township without any competitive bidding. So I request respectfully that we approve selling this decommissioned 1992 Pierce ladder truck to Putten Bay Fire Department for the amount of $16,500 on emergency. And then I would also propose that that money be reallocated into the Fire Department's capital fund for 2020 to try to buy some budgetary relief in our capital requests.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Perko. The, I know that the Putten Bay Village trustees were having a meeting today at 4:00 PM. Did we have them hear back as to whether they took any action?
Yes, they did approve.
They approved. Okay. So all we have to do now is, we approved this, they've already approved. And like all of us who have become too old to work for the city, we end up at Putten Bay. I hope that maybe I'll have this. All right. All right. Any questions for Chief?
Was there any, you said you looked on like the government websites and found that there were some difficulties selling these vehicles, especially in this current condition? Is there any option for non-government sale that might use for parade or other advertising purposes that you'd be researching to?
Sometimes folks in the tree business or collectors will bid on them on different income deals. But I was hopeful to get anywhere between $15,000 and $20,000. I thought that would be exceptionally well for us. And I don't know that that would happen or not, putting it out for bid. I can say as an example, the city of Shaker Heights had two decommissioned ladder trucks that they had a very hard time getting rid of over the course of a two-year period.
And they sold for a lesser price?
I believe they ended up donating one to the Cleveland Museum, Fire Museum.
Not to mention you have to store them.
Correct. And maintain them.
I understand Dennis Kennedy wanted. Oh, sorry.
A little lower price.
All right. All right. Any other, any other questions for Chief Perko? I kind of want to get a picture of it on the ferry going. Just been picturing this ever since I heard about this opportunity. There's a training opportunity, right?
Yes, they did ask about training. They reached out to the mechanic shop actually, which they offered to do some maintenance training for them. So I talked to our maintenance officer and our training officer. They're more than willing to go over and assist with a training plan, so they were very appreciative of that. And they said they would work out the details here on approval. Absolutely.
One more reason to go to Putten Bay is to have a fire station and pose with their own truck. All right. Anything further? Is there a, is there a motion, is there a motion to approve on emergency resolution 20-15, authorizing the sale of the 1992 Pierce ladder truck to the Putten Bay, Ohio Fire Department in the amount of $16,500? And respecting the chief's point, if we could earmark those funds for the Fire Department after that. I think he wanted to help outfit the new ladder truck this month, is that right?
Correct.
Is there a few items that we apparently didn't want to order?
Mr. McCordell?
Yes.
The portion of the incorporation of funds where that purpose is not in this resolution, is there a separate resolution that's necessarily in order to make that?
We're not appropriate, you're selling.
No, I'm talking about the, the manner in which these funds are used is not, is not specified in this ordinance.
That's correct. So what that would mean is that those funds would go into general fund. Correct me if I'm wrong. I guess, I guess based on what the chief was saying, is there, is it appropriate or, you know, we can discuss whether we want it or not, but is it even appropriate to consider earmarking the $16,500 for the Fire Department? Yeah, but I mean, Dennis, I'll defer to you, but my, my answer to that is that would be a budgetary function, we would do that in our budget.
Traditionally, we don't have a policy that stipulates disposal of assets. That's something I think I had told everybody I was working on a fixed asset policy, turning back to you. Normally what happens is the money would revert to the fund that expended the original cost of acquisition. So in this case, that came out of the capital improvement fund. So that money, in my estimation, should go back into the capital improvement fund as opposed to the general fund.
So.
So we don't need any preparation because it's going right back to the original?
So Chief, I understand what you're saying. It's not such a giving of this asset. We would hope that we would consider that as we're making decisions for the budget and certainly allocate that in my, actually, other members of council. Since it's not here in this ordinance, it wouldn't be necessarily used forever. It sounds like it would go back to capital, capital fund.
I think we can all make a note that the $16,500 should make its way over to the Fire Department as we work out the budget.
So Mayor, I would make a motion to pass the resolution authorizing the sale of the 1992 Pierce ladder truck on emergency for the amount of $16,500 to Putten Bay Fire Department.
Sounds very good. That's an order. Motion by, motion by Mr. Will to pass this resolution on emergency. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Wise. Any discussion? Seeing that, Mrs. Thomas, hold the two votes. First, on the suspension of the rules.
Mrs. Blenfield, aye. Mrs. Berry, aye. Mrs. Wise, aye. Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Will?
Aye.
Okay. And then on the main motion.
Mrs. Blenfield, aye. Mrs. Berry, aye. Mrs. Wise, aye. Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Will?
Aye.
Retirement pool. Resolution passes. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Perko.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay. We do, our, your call now that we have an added item, item K. Is the motion to accept the 2020 community recycling awareness grant in the amount of $6,000 for the city of University Heights for the purpose of providing certain activities listed in the grant. I'll speak briefly as to this. This, this is a grant for four outdoor recycling containers. Signage is required for those containers as well as for some magnets, postcards, and bags for the new homeowner packets. We already do that to some extent, but at some point we ran out of those items. And then finally, there's also a portion of, an award of 400 free reusable shopping bags for me before our distribution and the files, when those bags are available to pick up, which may not be until late spring. This particular grant, we received word this morning, late this morning, that we won this grant. And they have requested that we sign a return form accepting it by February 28th. Our next council meeting wasn't till March, thus necessitating, thus making it desirable to add it, you know, to the agenda today, you know, on such short notice. This is a $6,000, it is a $6,000 grant. The grant application itself called for about $6,700 and change in, in, for the project that we're using to do. And then we'd be reimbursed $6,000. So we'd be able to afford $700 for what we would be doing here. Perhaps a more notable thing that I would like to mention here on the record is that this particular grant was the first grant that was written and applied for by our, by friend in Zach, who has joined our city about a year and a half ago, first as an intern. And was here for a couple of semesters and wanted to keep him when, when he was a recipient of a, of an internship opportunity that was funded, I think, Cleveland Foundation? Do you remember? I did. Yes. Cleveland Foundation to go do an exterior maintenance program in the city of Brooklyn. And I hated to see him go because I saw so much potential in Mr. Zach. We made it clear to him that he was welcome to back to join us and keep doing the great work he'd been doing here in the city. And he took us up on that. So he's finishing up his senior year at CSU. He's working part-time for us with an entry-level city planner title. And he has earned for us his very first grant on behalf of the city. And Patrick has a running total of his grants, Chief Perko has a running total of his grants. Those numbers have become impressive over the years. And I believe that we, this is the very first of a long line of grants I hope Mr. Zach would be successful on for us. I remember quipping at some point that Mr. Zach was coming back and we found ourselves, the next Patrick, I didn't mean to be suppression about that. But the thing is, is that I think the young man has a bright future here at the city of University Heights. And I think this is just a glimpse of some very good work we're doing for the city. So it's something fitting about, you know, being able to receive this here this evening with Patrick here at his last meeting and with all the training that Mr. Zach has obtained from Mr. Kirby Myers. As well as Mrs. Stone, they've all worked very closely together. Of course, unless you have. So that all said, any questions about the grant or anything else with respect to this? So Mr. Will had a couple of questions for me offline, separate from this discussion. But I think I covered those. I'm serious here.
Just have one question about the outdoor recycling containers.
Yes.
Are they going to be sort of saved for people to come in? What's the purpose of those?
No, no, I think the idea here is to have these containers out in the community. We already have some waste cans there out there.
Oh, they're going to be like waste or something?
Yes. Yes. So, so we can have these, these cans out there as additional places to leave recyclables. Rather throw away your can and recycle it. Just one other question.
I was just going to ask, do you plan on putting them by bus stops or just wherever, wherever they're placed now, you may be able to put a second one. I have to recycle them by the time I go home.
I think that's right. Patrick, you may be more familiar with the grant application than I am. Does that sound right to you?
That's correct. The, the goal is that it would be paired with a trash can, deposed the alternative to the trash can.
I thought that was right, but I didn't want to cancel. Thank you. Anything further? Is there a motion to accept the grant from the Howard County Solid Waste District in the amount of $6,000? There's a motion by, Mr. Will, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Berry. Any discussion? Seeing that, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Blenfield, aye. Mrs. Berry, aye. Mrs. Wise, aye. Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Motion.
Aye.
Very good. Motion is passed. Next item is a motion to hold executive session, you'll be following regular meeting for the purpose of discussing personal legal and/or real estate matters. I have nothing that I would ask the council of that would require an executive session. So unless the council has something, I don't believe there'll be any one here at this time. All right. Very good. That takes us then to reports, financing. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, as the mayor had indicated earlier in his comments, a revised budget also was sent out late this evening, just prior to the CEC meeting. So I would look forward to having a chance to discuss that tomorrow evening with the Finance Advisory Committee. I would caution, I still have to go through and there, put that together to be quick. But I think the changes from my first review of it all were accepted. We've had some system problems with dual systems. But I'll follow that through again tomorrow to let everybody know. But I would ask everybody to take a look at that before tomorrow night's meeting. I also sent out late in the day an income statement, an expense report, a revenue report, and a report for FIFTHER on our investment portfolio, all for the month of January. They're very voluminous. I apologize for that. Until I get this conversion with this new system that we're trying to implement, about 60% done with that. And ideally, when we get that done, I'll be able to sit down with each one of you. You tell me what you want to see. We can program that reporting. Somebody may want to focus on revenues, somebody may want to focus on expense, audit trails, whatever. We could build those reports that'll be generated out of the system. And you can access those yourself through a dashboard that you'll be able to access through the web. So I said, I'm about 60% done with that. I apologize for a lot of the conversion and transition type issues that have come up. But I think at the end of the day, it's going to be good, it'd be good from a transparency standpoint for the community as well. Related to the investments, as you know, we took some investment money out for the operating account. We recently received our second advance from the county for property taxes. So cash-wise, we're doing a little better. So I mean, I promised you we'd take a look at what the prospects were for paying some or all of that money back into the portfolio. So I hope you have that done by noon or noon. We're, we have an audit conference scheduled for next week for anybody who's interested. I believe that's 8:15 in the morning on the 26th. The auditors have been there for three or four weeks, keeping us busy. So we're going at a good pace with them. But I would offer that invitation to everybody to come to that meeting. Should not be fairly lengthy, but be a good opportunity to familiarize yourself with the difference between the state auditors and private auditors that the city's used to in the past.
That is, it's 8:15 AM.
In the hours.
Oh, it'd be, yes, it is at the end. So 2245, so, but you have been, yes, that would be 8:15 on Wednesday, the 26th.
And I, anybody has any questions on any of those financial reports, please let me know. Look forward to talking about the budget in the morning tomorrow night. And I would personally like to say thank you, Patrick. to say thank you to Patrick. I've only been here a few months, but he's a human violin cabinet, and he's a wealth institution knowledge, which I swirled this, and I told him I'd continue to call him, and I know people in Maple Heights, so you have to call me back. But he's been great. Very nice guy, and I wish him good luck.
And then the finance meeting is tomorrow at 6:30.
Yeah.
Very good. Mrs. Wise, you have it.
Thank you. How's the intern prospects looking?
Finance interns?
Finance.
I have, what, four or five candidates. I told me down here with the whole budget and seeing where we're at, and, you know, I kind of held that off. We have two part-time interns that work for the city in other capacities. I'd like, I just need to get somebody that's got some kind of expertise in technology, the cutting corners that I think would benefit everybody in terms of production reports, analytics, and most things.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Thank you, Mrs. Wise. Anybody, anything further for Mrs. Brown? All right, same one. Next report Director of Law, Cliff McCung.
Thank you, Mayor. Want to report to council that, you may recall, I believe in December of last year, council authorized the city to enter into a letter of intent with the Cleveland Heights, University Heights School Board regarding purchase of parcels in the residential attached district. We have successfully negotiated a purchase agreement based on that letter of intent, and it's anticipated that we'll be entering into that agreement In addition, we're in the process of negotiating a development agreement with KNEZ related to the proposed transfer of those parcels to KNEZ once we've acquired all of them. So the residential attached district project is very close to becoming much more real here in the city. Mr. Gould had forwarded to me a proposed anti-discrimination ordinance. I will be reviewing that prior to the next meeting, and you can anticipate that in the next agenda. I'm meeting this coming Monday with Mr. Gregory Myers and Mrs. Blankfeld regarding rental registration ordinance and related concerns. Mrs. Blankfeld will be asking me to take a look at existing regulations in other communities relating to Airbnb facilities. I will have a memo on that out to all council sometime this week, so then we can add that to our list on the next inclusion report.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. McCung. Mrs. Wise.
I just had a question. So is that only going to committee after the memo, or how's that coming out?
Very good. Any other questions for Mr. McCung? All right, very good. We'll move on to public safety, starting with police. Chief Rogers.
No report.
Thank you, Chief. Fire, Chief Burka.
Thank you, Mayor. Two items to report on. Two weeks ago, ISO, not with us, gave us an analysis of our department. We have not received back the final report yet. Probably about a month out from that. We did learn of some things that we could try to do better as far as our training and our operational deployment. One thing that was notable was that we did not have an in-service ladder truck that passed the aerial testing. So hopefully here we have an opportunity now to get that out-of-service ladder truck off of our books and press this new ladder truck into service. And I'm hopeful that we will just squeak in on the timeline so that we can retain those points that we've had before for a ladder truck, because ISO does require our city to have that, and I think we will be good with that. That said, as I indicated, we were down in Columbus yesterday. We conducted the final inspection on the ladder truck. That project started in early 2018, so it's been a long road. We've had seven committee members put a lot of time and effort into this, a lot of trips down to Columbus. We're fortunate to have a vendor that really worked with us. This truck is extremely custom. In fact, this particular truck has got a lot of first of the time things that this company has done. This is mainly due to the size and age of the building that it's going into. We had length restrictions and height restrictions that narrowed down the vendors, and then even as this one was able to meet those restrictions. We still ran the issues along the way with the build process, lowering the height required different things like the water tank, the amount of gallons of water in there to be changed, and all these things play into part with your ISO rating, having the right amount of hose, the right amount of water, the right amount of portable ground ladders on the ladder truck. So it was a very tedious process, but the committee as well as the company were able to pull it off, and it looks fantastic, and I think it will serve the community very well. It should be making its delivery up to Richfield, Ohio this Friday, hopefully. And then next week, the build-out of it will continue as far as mounting equipment, installing communications and the like. Once we get here, training will commence. So I'm sure that at the next council, we'll likely try to put the truck in service.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Burka. Any questions for the chief? All right. Thank you, chief.
Thanks.
Next up is service. Jeff Corney, Mr. Corney, you have the board.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I just had three items I wanted to make council and the public aware of. Our household hazardous waste collection and paper shredding will be held March 7th, Saturday, March 7th, from 9:00 in the morning until 1:00 in the afternoon. We also are open for drop-offs the Friday before on the 6th. So that will be conducted. That's time change weekend, and then we'll hold another one in November. We'll post these items also out on the web as we have the opportunity. Secondly, I'm scheduling a tree pruning and removal seminar, so that people have the opportunity to voice their opinion about our tree program, including planting. So prior to the next council meeting on March 2nd, we will hold a meeting at 6 o'clock here with the city arborist, Jason Knowles, people from Parks Tree, that's the company that we have a contract with doing the tree trimming, and myself. And we won't field any questions people have regarding our tree pruning and/or removal program along with our planting. Last, on Wednesday, April 8th, we will be doing a Passover food collection in the morning. Anytime they can put it out from dawn until noon. Afternoon, we will not have time to collect any more material. It'll take us that amount of hours in the morning to collect Passover food items. So that'll be Wednesday, April 8th, Passover food collection from dawn to noon. That concludes my report.
You did say that was out to the curb.
Yes.
Not when you were in the long.
Correct. We don't have the equipment to do more than. We'll be running a regular Wednesday rubbish round that day as well.
Thank you, Mr. Corney. And I know that there was a formal inquiry that I haven't formally responded to, but I discussed we were moving that, and I'm glad that you mentioned it the same way. So yes, we will do some reflection on Wednesday. Very good. Very good. Any questions for Mr. Corney?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Next up is Building Department, Mr. Reynolds.
No report there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reynolds. City Engineer, Joe Chuni.
No report this evening, there.
Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Communications and Civic Engagement, Mr. Cook.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Some good news about our city magazine, Mosaic. It will be hitting mailboxes next week, probably Wednesday and Thursday. We'll have advanced copies at City Hall, possibly as early as tomorrow. Well, I'd have bet on it, I'd say Friday, but we'll let you know once they arrive. You want to get a sneak peek, if not, you'll get one in your mailbox next week. And also, as you know, we partner with the Cleveland Jewish News to publish our magazine. They take care of the ad sales for us, so that we get a 30% cut of that. I'm pleased to report that for this issue, we've set an all-time sales record. And to be clear, it's not an all-time sales record for our magazine. It's an all-time sales record for every city magazine that, pardon me, that Cleveland Jewish News does. So that includes Beechwood, South Euclid, Lynn Hurst, and Cleveland Heights. I mean, it's not a competition, but please report that $13,041.50 ads are sold. So our commission on that will be about almost $40,000. And I'm optimistic that the summer issue will even higher, because ad-wise, the advantage we have in the summer is that people are, companies are advertising in their summer camps. So if we sell all the ads that we sold for this issue, plus throwing a couple camp ads in bulk, and that'll be even higher. And so I think one reason that the ad sales are so high is, again, as I said before, when I'm reporting on ad sales, that I think the community, the advertisers are pleased with the work of this mayor, of this council, and the administration. And also, I wanted to thank Susan Drucker for her support on this, like creating a business-friendly environment in the city and helping bring in new businesses. Some of the new businesses in town are now advertising the magazine. So I think, I think that helps. It's a team effort, and we're looking forward to that issue coming out this week or next week.
Very good, very good. Thank you, Mr. Cook. I, you know, when I first heard the news that we had that kind of record ad sales and that the, you know, businesses, most of those businesses being in our community are this committed to advertising and reaching, you know, the residents of this city this way, it is, it's gratifying. It's gratifying. Because we knew that when we set out to do this magazine, we were taking a chance. We didn't know if it wouldn't just be a one-issue wonder and that it would peter out after that. There's a lot of demand here.
Right.
And it's, and also, like you said, it's also a testament to the merchants in this community being engaged with what the city's doing, largely through the efforts of our Economic Development Department, which means the efforts of Susan Drucker. So thank you, Susan. And, you know, there are a lot of people responsible for, you know, the success of this magazine, and, you know, a lot of it's also very good writing, which is a lion's share, which I don't need to, and I appreciate you for what you're doing there, too.
Thank you for that. I mean, while I can take credit for some of the articles, but obviously, Catherine from the school district contributes one. Each issue came along from the university. University Ave contribute one. Gina contributes the magazine, or the restaurant review each month. And Diane, who volunteers as freelance, contributes the small business pilot article. So it's a team effort recruiting, you know, telling people to write, and, you know, just give a call.
All right, very good. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cook?
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Next up is Economic Development, Susan Drucker.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A couple announcements with some businesses. I mentioned previously Chocolate Emporium is, has moved into 2169 South Green Road. That's the former our sushi place. So they're back because they were a little, a while ago. So it's nice to have them back. Also, Handel's Homemade Ice Cream and Yogurt has submitted plans. They are looking to move into 2261 Warrensville Center Road. That's the former OMP Services. That's the building. So it would be Biadli's, then there's the space next to Biadli's, and then there is a salon going in, and then there will be the Handel's Ice Cream. So they submitted plans to build that location out. So when those, when that gets closer to coming to fruition with a grand opening, I will let you know. Also, I am working right now with Citizens Bank in helping to get the word out for the Small Business Community Champion Award. This is an award that honors small businesses as they make their extraordinary contributions to not only the citizens, but the community they live in and how they affect lives of their customers. So this award is sponsored by Citizens Bank, and it's eligible owners of small businesses in the greater Cleveland area. So I have pushed that out to all of our businesses. They're aware of it, that they can submit an application. It's up to, it could be a $10,000 or a $20,000 award that this small, each small business would be, could possibly receive this if you were chosen. And I do, I have heard back from four of our businesses that are going to take advantage of this. So it doesn't mean that more aren't going to, but at least four of them did respond that, that they are interested in pursuing this. Wanted to give a little bit of an update. Has to do with University Square. I've been getting, as you know, with that one building with Cold Stone Creamery, where that, or Cold Stone Creamery was in the Verizon building, there are four units. I've been receiving several calls from potential retailers looking to want to locate in that space. So what I want to understand is that is considered phase two of the University Square proposed development. So the developer is not looking to lease that out. That is a building that could get, it could be leased out 100%. But what you would look to is, they can't commit to more than possibly 18 months to two years, because then they're ready for phase two. So no one's going to come in, do a complete build-out, move in, and then by that time have maybe one year to 18 months. So I just wanted, if you hear anything, I just wanted to remind people, that's why that space is not being filled. It is already, it's earmarked for phase two of a brand or redevelopment plan. So I just wanted to remind the public. I do, and when I get the calls from these potential retailers, I then forward that on to Brad Cowan, so he knows who's interested, because there have been several businesses that are interested in locating in the retail spaces that will be provided even in phase one. So I just forward those to Brad and then, and turn the conversations over so that the developer can have direct conversations with any potential retailer coming in. And then, Council Rock, I will be reaching out to you for a meeting. I'm very anxious. I already have a whole agenda all ready for you. So I'll email you, and we can coordinate some dates possibly for, hopefully. I know council will be busy with the budget, but maybe in March, we can get the committee together. So, and then finally, I would just like to thank Patrick Rogan Myers. It has been an absolute pleasure working with Patrick. We work hand in hand every day, so I am going to miss him greatly. I think we've done a lot of good work together, and I want to wish him well in your new chapter and your new career. So, or your continued career, I should say. So, thank you very much. That's my report for the time.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Drucker. Any questions for Mrs. Drucker?
Just one. The Handel's Ice Cream is one that has such great fame south of us, like kind of the falls in that.
Oh, yes. They still have a location actually in Twinsburg. It's seasonal when it's open, though. So yes, that is the same, same brand.
Yeah, I mean, now that you brought it up again, I'm more free to go there. But I, I spent part of my childhood in Youngstown, and I used to ride my bike, you know, I would ride past the Dairy Queen and go that extra mile to know that it was. And Handel's was the best ice cream I knew when I was a kid. And the idea that it's a bee comes from that area of the state as well. So he knows exactly what I'm talking about. He'll probably be at the front line with me. My name is official capacity, is that going to happen?
That's a little bit known.
But we know what we're in for, and to know that it's a short walk from City Hall is beyond me, because I'm in so much trouble. Yeah.
Thank you.
No offense to Ben and Jerry's, he was already here. I like Ben and Jerry's, but that hand. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Drucker. Mr. Rogan Myers, Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an unexperienced me giving my last director's report. I was thinking about, I've been involved with the University Heights over the last 11 years since I moved up here from Columbus to go to Jackeau. So from being a resident through the last five years full-time and seven years total working for residents and working with you, it's, it's a lot to process and a lot to take in. So I'm very thankful and grateful to your guidance and working with you in the book for the next chapter, and taking so much of what I've learned here with me. So, of course, I don't know how to stop working and... So of course, I don't know how to stop working and so I'll just kind of like skip right into 4:30 next Wednesday. But so a couple of things I wanted to bring up. First was, last meeting I had mentioned that the Housing and Community Development Department was working on the 2020 program for the exterior maintenance program. This systematic inspection that we do every year and working our way through the community every five years, making sure that we're keeping up the housing stock here in the city. So one of the questions that Councilwoman Pardy had asked was, can you identify for us which area of town we'll be in this year? Part of what I did in working with our city planner, Brennan Zach, we have a GIS subscription that helps us create high-quality, high-detail maps to be able to put out into the community through our website as well as in nice print form. So part of what I've done and will be passing around here is a set of two maps. The first is what I'm calling Year A. So this is what will be inspected this year. For those who don't have any from them, it'll be the southwest corner of the city, roughly bounded by the properties on Eaton Road through the Southern Corporation Line, just west of Warrensville, not including the properties on Warrensville, and approximately south of Oak Brook. And then on the second page is the full five-year rotation as mapped out, the goal being that we're going to hit between 800 and 900 properties a year owing to Dennis's filing cabinet reference. There's 4,256 single and two-family parcels here in the city of University Heights, so that's the magic number that we've worked towards and trying to decide. You can just get a reasonable amount of properties each year in that five-year rotation. When I started as director, I saw various elements of a cycle. I wanted to put something on, in paper, in a commitment to the community, recommitting to the community, this exterior maintenance program. So this is on the website. I will continue the review just to make sure it's crystal clear that we're starting in Year A. The notices will be going out to the community within the next two weeks, so that notice will go out to those properties highlighted in red, which are the program year 2020 homes that will be inspected. So that answers that question I know that I promised council an answer to, and then I know that I'll be gone, but hopefully Mr. Zach will be here or with Mayor Brennan. We are currently under review for the Community Development Supplemental Grant Application, that's for the Cedar Taylor Streetscape improvements that hopefully, this is the year. Fingers crossed this is the year. And thanks to County Councilwoman Cheryl Stevens, who wrote a glowing letter of recommendation to include with our application. We had a letter of recommendation as well from Cleveland Heights and then the Local Development Association. So I think we've got a strong application. I think this year's the year. So, and we will.
Very good. I can't, I just wanted to, thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry, didn't ask if there are any questions for Patrick Gergen there.
No, I just wanted to say, I don't know if Patrick remembers, but the first time we met it was at John Carroll and I'm not exactly sure what you were doing, something with audiovisual of the class I was taking, so. No, so I just, I want to wish you best of luck and not just this, with your future.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That takes us now to Council Committees, Building and Housing.
No report this evening there.
Committee Outreach, Mrs. Pardy, she was excused from Jack's meeting. Is anybody having a report from that committee? Saying none, Economic Development's now Mr. Rock.
No report yet.
Oh, okay. Finance, Mrs. Weiss.
Yes, thank you. First, I want to thank the mayor for helping, apologizing to council, I think that was sincere and I hope this is, we're going to get past this collaboratively. There's still a lot of work to do on the budget.
For sure.
Some tweaking. We have a finance committee meeting on Thursday, tomorrow, at 6:30 at the annex. The goal is really to hopefully get this approved to be able to pass it to council on the first, the first meeting of March. That's the goal. I think we're getting there, so worst-case scenario, it could be an emergency of the second reading for the second meeting in March, but, so that's kind of the game plan for now. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Recreation, Mr. Erdl, he was excused from that meeting. Is anybody happy to thank for that committee? Oh, Mrs. Weiss.
The paperwork that I annually submit to the Pentagon went to Cleveland FAA, has come back from Cleveland FAA, is on its way back to the Pentagon. So hopefully we'll get approved for a flyover, the Memorial Day Parade, and hopefully we will not have mechanical issues and have to skip us like we did last year. Fingers crossed.
All right, very good. Thank you for that, Mrs. Weiss. Okay. Next up, Safety. Well, that would be. Service Utilities, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll reach out to council to set meetings and discuss the budget issues and how they're going to happen as well. I've also reached out to NOPEC. They offer a no-nop program for utilities, so as part of the utility function of service utilities, I'd like to discuss the potential bringing a program into University Heights before the summer door to their non-tenant service. Have another option for our citizens to prevent that type of thing. It sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Was that it?
That was it.
Oh, very good. I didn't mean to cut you off. Okay, very good. Then Community Home, Mrs. Weiss.
No.
Very good. We have reached the conclusion of our agenda this evening. There is a Finance Committee meeting tomorrow at 6:30 at the annex. That's 2245 Warrensville. And our next regular meeting is the first Monday in March, so without further ado, is there motion to adjourn?
No, wait. Second.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Blankfeld, second by Mrs. Weiss, Mrs. Thomas, who has all the rules.
I agree. And one, and.
I.
Your adjournment. Thank you.